Welcome to the July 11th, 2023 meeting of the Channel Select Board. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the Chair. Seeing none. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29th, 2023 signing of the Acts of 2023 extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law, Chapter 38, subsection 20, until March 31st, 2025, this meeting of the Channel Select Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceeding as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 203-386-491, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. First item of the evening is a roll call to establish quorum. Select Board Member Castro.
Present.
Select Board Member Davis.
Present.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Present.
Select Board Member Shell.
Present.
And Select Board Member Metters is present. Good. Just kind of a quick little rundown of this evening's agenda. We have some amendments I need to point out. We have two sets of minutes, one for June 27th and one for July 5th. We will follow that by public announcements and agenda item requests. We have three public hearings from Eversource to install handhold and conduit at three of the various locations. We will do a drought status update with our DPW Director. We will then go into public comments on our business agenda, which is the following. Item A, year-end transfers from our Finance Director, Alex Halela. Item B, Summer Residence Advisory Committee request to conduct a survey of Summer Residence and Review Draft Survey. Item C, Special Town Meeting warrant articles, Belt Filter Press Project supplemental funding. Item D, denote acceptance of bequeath of property for affordable housing at 63 George Ryder Road. There is going to be no action on this item tonight. It is going to be withdrawn at the moment. Item E, low-lying road study, road selections. We'll have our Director of Coastal Resources, Ted Keon. Item F, consider release of a series of executive session minutes. Item G, which is appointments both to the Airport Commission and the Historical Commission. And Item H, which is on the agenda, Convenient Affordable Housing Trust Fund. There will be no action tonight, thus canceling the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Executive Session that is in the posted agenda. So just to recap, Item D will have no action, Item H will have no action, and the executive session has been canceled for this evening. With all that being said, we will start with our approval of minutes, starting with June 27th, 2023. I'll entertain a motion. Do I hear a second?
Again.
Okay, corrections, omissions, Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have several. On page two, under item Roman numeral two, third paragraph, third line, after the word "Directors," I'd like to insert the following phrase, comma, "without the need for town meeting action," comma. So, comma, "without the need for town meeting action." At the very bottom, the last paragraph, first line, right near the middle, after the phrase "and happiness," I want to put the word "for Bob." So, express both his sadness and happiness for Bob. Next page, under Roman numeral three, second line, the word "station" should probably be deleted. So it just should say "drinking water pumping." Following paragraph in the fourth line, right, second to last word, liters, I think what was meant was meters? Not sure. Next page, first paragraph, I didn't check the video on this, but in the very last line of that paragraph, was it, did, was 51 million gallons really what was recited? I don't know.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, on paragraph four on that page, which is just the word, and third line precedent, it's precedent, E-N-T. And Town Council at the end of that line would be S-E-L. I should have probably sent those, those are typos. I should have just sent those to you, but I didn't get around to it. The next page, at the very last paragraph, I'd like to add this sentence after the word Shakespeare, after the phrase Shakespeare in the Park. Outreach to the theater group was encouraged. Page seven, right in the middle, the paragraph that begins, "Mr. Metters asked for any precedents," and again, I should be precedence T-S. Apologize for not getting that to you, and a couple more like, sort of like that. Next page, right up the top, Summer Advisory Committee, we should put the word "resident" in, Summer Resident Advisory Committee. Summer Residence Advisory Committee, plural, and that would be the same addition in the fourth line, Summer Residence Advisory Committee. Under Council of Aging, Board of Directors, Mr. Castro made a motion to, we should, the verb was missing, "to appoint Barbara Siegel." And under G, in the italicized sentence, I would put a comma and then add, "and Mr. Shell presided." And then, next page, about two-thirds of the way down is a paragraph that begins, "Ms. Goldsmith asked." The third and fourth lines, I wasn't quite sure what was being said there, but I think the word articulates should be, in the past tense, articulated, the motion that subject to adoption, so insert the word "to." And then, at the bottom where it says, "Mr. Metters returned to the dais," I would put comma, "and reassumed to the chair." The next page, page 10, I think there's a stray entry up at the top, "Motion to recommend Article XX," should probably be deleted. And then the last one is on page 11. The paragraph in the middle which says, begins, "Discussion continued." I would, the second to last line, "Mr. Castro made mention," I would strike "made mention" and put "inquired of." Okay. And I realize this was the first set of minutes that we had from our new assistant, and it was well done. I apologize for bringing up the more proofreading type things at the present time. I did want to mention that we, in the minutes, we used to insert the names of the Select Board members that made comments some years ago, and then we got away from that, and it was basically, comments were recited, but it was referred to as, "it was noted that," or it was, I'm okay either way. I know, I just noted that in this particular session. Presentation of minutes that it was worded the prior way, so I don't know what the Board feels about that, the rest of the Board feels about that, but.
Yeah, so it's a little nuanced for Kathy coming on, so.
Yeah, sure.
It's probably easier for us if we don't attribute it to a name, just because we're not taking transcripts or trying to get the essence of what board members say, but if that's something you want to reconsider, we're definitely open for that.
Okay. No, I think Kathy, you know, made every effort to recite what was said, and probably wasn't acquainted with what we've been doing here. So, I'm okay with the way that it had been done prior to this set of minutes, but I don't know if others feel the same way, so I'm not going to offer any motion or anything. I just wanted to make that observation.
No. As long as we get the body of the dialogue that's being presented, I don't think, I'm not worried about if it's my name or your name. If something needs to be very clearly spelled out, that's perfectly fine, but I think we just need a little transition time, and the minutes are very well done, just.
Whatever works, again, it's a learning curve for me, so I know everybody likes minutes differently, so I'm open to whatever way you prefer them to be presented. I have no issue with any constructive criticism, I will gladly take it and.
Yeah, it's not intended as criticism.
Oh, no, no, no. Yeah, no, notes, comments, however you want to word it, I'm open to it.
All right, thank you. All right, comments or questions about the minutes? Mike.
Yeah, thanks. Well, I'll just add my two cents here for what it's worth, two cents. I think it is a good practice to leave the names out. I've always liked that. I think it's a good practice, obviously, to identify members of the public or other non-Board members by name, and that's the way it's been done, and I'm sure you'll pick that up in a big hurry. And I would also add my commendation, I thought they were great. I do have a couple of substantive comments. Since one of mine overlaps a comment that Dean made, and with his approval, I would go to page nine, the sentence that he tried to fix up that begins, the Ms. Goldsmith paragraph, the sentence that begins with me, my calling attention, I was just going to rewrite that entire sentence to say, "Mr. Shell called attention to the condition in Article 19 for adoption by the voters of the debt exclusion ballot question, which condition has already occurred." Thank you. And then, with respect to one of Dean's other comments just below that, where it says, "Mr. Metters returned to the dais," I think that probably your program didn't give you an H, it gave you a one. I think that that declaration of surplus is the next item under our business agenda, and then it screwed up the indentation and so forth on page 10. And then my last, if you've got that, my only other substantive comment is on page nine, also, I would propose in the top line to add after the words specifically, the words "the condition for," so that it reads to be addressed, noting specifically the condition for the passage of Article 18. And with that, I'm fine.
Additional questions or comments on the minutes? Seeing none. Motion to approve as amended. Select Board Member Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
And Select Board Member says aye. All right, next, the minutes of July 5th, 2023.
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any corrections, omissions, corrections? We are good. All right, all those in favor? Select Board Member Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metters says aye. Public announcements and agenda item requests. I'll start with the Board. Does anyone have any public announcements or agenda requests? Mike?
Yeah, this is something that I've spoken with briefly with the Town Manager. I want to get on the agenda of the town as well as our agenda for later in the summer and perhaps earlier, early in September, in anticipation of the special town meeting, to what I would call, and these need to be worked out in detail, but basically to Select Board-sponsored town halls for the town, at which in the first, there would be a presentation from relevant parties of what we'll call a refreshment and updating and a discussion of the cost of the proposed CCAL at 1610 Main Street and whatever other elements of that there are. I think in our last meeting on that subject, we did as a group ask the Town Manager to, I'll call it, work on the cost assessment of that project and to reassess it with the help of the architect and the OPM and estimators and whoever else can be, can help contribute to that. And then the second town hall that I have in mind is proposing, again, with the, with the aegis of the Select Board, would be a kind of a town discussion of the issues with an opportunity for all to make comments, make presentations for and against, and have a kind of a community discussion that gets it all out on the table. So that would be my suggestion.
All right, thank you. Additional for the Board? Okay, go to staff. Our Town Manager has a couple items.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I wanted to provide the Board and the community an update of just events that happened over the weekend regarding the posting for the closure to swimming at Bucks Creek and Oyster Pond. I do have Judy Giorgio with me remotely, and I thought I would go over the events and then return to her to provide some more details on what the testing results mean. So, just to look back of how we got here, so the town's Health and Natural Resources Department was notified by Barnstable County last Thursday evening, July 6th, that the Bucks Creek water sample collected on Wednesday, July 5th, returned with enterococci bacteria levels exceeding the acceptable levels. As Bucks Creek is listed by the Department of Public Health to be posted after one failure, it was closed to swimming first thing on Friday morning and posted by the health inspector. That was July 7th. Enhanced signage was placed on Sunday, July 9th, after it came to our attention that the no-swimming postings were somehow missing. They were found later on the side of one of the dunes. Good news is that we were just notified that Bucks Creek has passed the geometric mean limit of the last five water samples at 35 or below and may be open, and I'll have Judy speak to that when I'm done. Also, last Friday on July 7th, the county notified the Health and Natural Resources staff that Oyster Pond unexpectedly went into geometric mean failure that day with a geometric mean of 36.09, just over the limit of 35. A notice of the closure of Oyster Pond for swimming was sent by the Health and Natural Resources Department on Saturday morning, July 8th, and posted to the website. However, the onsite posting did not occur, and we need to become aware of that until Sunday, July 9th. So Saturday all day, there was no posting for it onsite. On Sunday, the lifeguards reported to Oyster Pond Beach to inform people who were there that the beach was closed to swimming, and at the same time, we were working with staff to get the signage that we can post onsite. So we also deployed the electronic signage in the parking lot, noting beach closed for swimming, and that's still there as we speak. So Oyster Pond unfortunately remains closed to swimming. Another sample was taken today with results expected tomorrow, and our health agent Judy Giorgio can speak to more of this in just a few moments. So yesterday on July 10th, staff met to discuss the events of the weekend. Staff is working on improved protocols, communications, and better signages to address closures due to elevated bacteria levels particularly, but also any closures due to the presence of marine life or weather-related conditions. We also updated the water quality lab page on the town's website under Natural Resources to house the 2023 Bathing Beaches Water Quality Report that we received from Barnstable County with quick links to the recreation, excuse me, beaches pages. Public health and safety remains our top priority, and I know we can do better. So I'd like to turn this over to Judy Giorgio so she can answer any questions and provide any further details.
Okay. Hi, Judy.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me. Yeah, we had a little communication crack over the weekend. Bob and I were both out of town on vacation, so the signs did not get put up on Saturday as they should have. Bucks Creek was posted, but again, the sign had come down somehow. So we do test every Tuesday. Last week, they tested on Wednesday. Usually when we test, when they do the tests, it's the Barnstable County Lab, they send out their texts on Tuesdays, and we usually know by Wednesday afternoon whether any of our beaches are going to be reaching the failure numbers. And if it's a beach that hasn't had issues in the past, it just, and it is failing, it fails that particular week's test, they come back out and retest. We don't post it closed. That's what's allowed under the state's beach program. And if the second test comes back clean, then we're good to go. The second test comes back exceeding the limits of, for salt water, it's 104 colonies per 100 milliliters of water. So if the second test comes back bad, then we post it closed and they retest again. What happened at Oyster Pond is we have had, I think, two previous tests that were exceedances in June, and then were retested and came out clean. When the third test this weekend, this last weekend came back high, it pushed us over the geometric mean, and that means we have to immediately close it and get two more tests to prove that it's clean and take us out of the geometric mean category. So that's basically where we're standing right now with Oyster Pond. We're waiting for the test that was taken today. Hopefully that will come back clean. So I can take any questions, if you have anything in particular I can answer?
All right, thank you, Judy. Normally, this is public announcements and agenda requests, I am going to be a little more flexible under the timing of this, so we'll start with the Board. I am going to let the public comment if they so choose. Start with Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Judy, thank you for the report, and thanks to Town Manager for clarifying what happened this weekend. Can you tell me just what causes the elevations? I think that's a really important thing for me to understand.
You know, it can be stormwater. They test for enterococci, which is an indicator of fecal contamination, so that can be from stormwater runoff, animal waste. So that can be from stormwater runoff, animal waste, can be sewage or septic from, from homes that may have cesspools in the area. So it's really unclear. It's a non-point source. At least at this point, we have, we have nothing we can point our fingers to.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Jeff?
Yeah, just a quick one, Judy. How did we post Bucks Creek and then not post Oyster Pond?
Bucks Creek happened Thursday when we had staff here. Bob and Lucas were in on Thursday. The, the Oyster Pond report did not come in until like six o'clock Friday night. And Bob sent out the closure announcement on Saturday morning. I was in the woods in Maine and Lucas was, you know, not available either. And Bob took off for Norway or somewhere. So somehow we had a crack in that communication stream.
I assume that crack's been filled at this point and you guys have got.
Yeah, I think.
You gotta have backup. But you guys are away, you gotta have backup.
Yeah, no, no doubt.
Yep.
It was a perfect storm.
Thanks. Any other comments, questions of the board? I will have to chime in, but on Sunday, went down to Oyster Pond and I will have to say the lifeguard supervisor, Jamie, you know, had taken a computer typewritten letter or notice to place on the sign. So at least there was some action being done. And they had three guards on property kind of notifying potential beachgoers about the situation. So there were resources there Sunday morning. The only downside is because they were pulled to Oyster Pond, we didn't have guards at the time at Ridgeville or Cockle Co., which I believe actually Cockle Co. will not be getting guards this summer because of our, our lack of fully staffed lifeguards. But they, those guards who were on property or down at Oyster Pond were doing a very good job. They're engaging the public and trying their best to, to do their role in the situation. But they were looking for some direction and they asked some questions about signage. And I think there's going to be some potential consideration for different type of signage, protocols, equipment, signs, process, whatever, that I think we're gonna, you know, fill these cracks quickly and not have something like this happen again. So I will reach out to the public. Does anyone in the public have a question or comment on this item or any other public announcements or agenda item request?
Mr. Chair, there's Ms. Gibbs is online.
Elaine, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm sure you're aware, I've been sending a lot of emails over the last couple days on this issue, just for some things that have to be done differently. It, it is ineffective to close beaches and just post it on Facebook and on the town website. People are not reading those when they're going to the beach. I happened to see it Saturday morning that, and it was, it said the geometric mean limit had been exceeded. It didn't say what it was on Saturday morning. It was not posted, nothing was posted at the beach, nobody knew about it, there were no lifeguards. And all day I watched people in that water. When we found out, we didn't find out until Sunday that it was in fact the endococci bacteria. But one of the things that needs to change is that now the posting on the town website says we were told it was bacteria on Saturday, the eighth. We were not told that until Sunday. If people had seen that, I think they, they would have stayed out of the water. As far as Bucks Creek is concerned, again, I had seen that. I went down to Bucks Creek multiple times on Saturday. Kids were in the water, in the creek. There were no signs posted. If somebody posted it, I don't know, I didn't see, I was down there three times. And there were families in there. The gatehouse people did not say anything when people entered. When I entered on Sunday, I had to ask the gatehouse, is Bucks Creek closed? And he said, yes, there was a tiny handwritten sign. There are signs there now. I should point out that, Jill, you mentioned something about the, the number being thirty-five. The fact is on June twenty-seventh, Oyster Pond had, it was a hundred and seventy-eight. And then on July fifth, it was two hundred and twenty-two. That's like six times the acceptable rate for the bacteria. And I also looked to Mass Department of Public Health and they said, whenever this is exceeded multiple times, then immediately a beach is closed down when there's one recurrence. This happened in two thousand and twenty-one at Oyster Pond where there was bacterial matter in there and they couldn't determine the source. So this, Oyster Pond, when there are bacterial levels, should be automatic closure. I believe you're saying from now on, that's what's going to happen. You get one chance at it. It's, it's really disturbing when it takes so much to get a beach closed when nobody who's actually using it knows about it. And what's more important is we have to determine the source. Is it, is it human feces? And where is that source? I'm not sure it's just septic runoff or anything like that. If you all recall, we have had countless excavations at the corner of Pond Street and Stage Harbor Road for the sewer and the stormwater there. And I think that it obviously is coming from there because it goes right across the street into the pond. That road has been dug up, I can't tell you how many times. So I would hope, I, I think it's really important to find out if there's a problem with our sewer or our stormwater that is causing this. And I would hope moving forward that, that we are told in a, in a better way that the beaches are closed before even posted on Facebook, sign, the first thing to do is signs go up at the beach to keep people out of the water. You stop the hemorrhaging and then you go and you do all those other things. And I, I kept looking at the state in terms of the beach closures for this. Bucks Creek was on it, but Chatham wasn't even reported until today to the state. And so I think there, there are protocols and I would like to see what they are in terms of the order things are done in to make sure that the actual users are told. My grandkids, when it was a hundred and seventy-eight, my grandchildren were in that water and I didn't know it and I never would let them go in. That bacterial, if kids have cuts, it gets into their bloodstream and it can cause serious infections and it can cause all other kinds of things, you know, endocarditis, all kinds of stuff. So it's, it's very serious regardless of the source. And we have to be proactive and get the message out in any way possible, particularly during holidays when there are so, there were, there were probably throughout the course of Saturday when it was polluted, I would venture to guess, I live right across the street, there were five hundred to eight hundred kids during the course of that day that were in that water. There were pregnant women with their toddler, with their babies and infants in that water. It's not acceptable. So I hope this is a real wake-up call that we really have to pay attention to this because there are so many people in the water and obviously public health and safety should be our priority. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elaine. Any additional comments from the audience online? I see no hands up. All right. Additional comments from the board before I move on?
No, it just that, I just want to say that it sounds like we've recognized our mistake and taken the actions appropriately and appreciate the staff being on top of this.
Thank you. All right. We have a series of public hearings, EverSource petitions. We'll start one at a time. Jeff, if I could have you do the honors on the first notice?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Public hearing notice, the Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing at five thirty PM on Tuesday, July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three to consider a petition from N-Star Electric Company doing business as EverSource Energy to install one hundred and ten foot plus or minus of one to four inch conduit from one proposed handhole twenty-two slash H six A to a customer installed handhole twenty-two slash H six B to provide new underground service to a customer on Mill Pond Road. The public is welcome to attend the meeting in person or participate via a link in the meeting's posted agenda and all interested parties are encouraged to participate, sign the select board.
Thank you. I believe we have a representative from EverSource. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Marissa Jackson from EverSource. Thank you for having me. So our first item here is Mill Pond Road. We do have an existing pole along this roadway, which is twenty-two over six. So at the base of that pole, we're requesting to install a handhole, run a hundred and ten feet of conduit under the roadway to a second handhole. And this is to accommodate a new pump station. That being said, I'd be more than happy to address any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Since this is a public hearing, I'm going to open it up to the public first. Does anyone from the public have any questions or comments on this item? I see none. I will roll to the board. Dean?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval, but there is an edit typo on, under the certificate on the third page. And I think this is true of all three documents in the second line with notice adopted by the board of select board, the, the words board of should be deleted. So it's just notice adopted by the select board.
Okay. But I move approval. Do I hear a second? Will you, will you humor me on process? Can we close the public hearing and then vote?
Do you want to close the public?
I would like to close the public hearing and then take a formal vote. Humor me, please.
I move to close, I withdraw my earlier motion to approve and I move to close the public hearing.
Second. All right. All those in favor? Select Board Member Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
Select Board Member Metters. Okay, and a motion to approve, Mr. Dyke, Mr. Castro, sorry. Approval.
Second.
All those in favor? Mr. Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metters says aye. Second public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing at five thirty PM on Tuesday, July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three to consider a petition from N-Star Electric Company doing business as EverSource Energy to install one handhole thirty-eight HA fifteen and thirty-one feet plus or minus of three inch conduit to provide new underground service to the customer at three fifty-six Stage Harbor Road. The public is welcome to attend the meeting in person or participate via a link in the meeting's posted agenda. All interested parties are encouraged to participate, sign the select board.
Thank you, Mr. Dykens. I will, are our EverSource representatives speak on this?
Sure, thank you. Marissa Jackson, again, thank you from EverSource. Again, we have an existing pole along Stage Harbor Road, thirty-eight over fifteen. That would be our starting point where we'd install one handhole. And directly across the street, we'd like to install the thirty-one feet approximately of conduit to accommodate the customer at three fifty-six Stage Harbor.
Thank you. I will open it up for public comment, questions? Anyone online? I don't see any hands. Would the board have any questions? Do we want to close the public hearing and vote?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Second, all right? All those in favor? Select Board Member Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
Select Board Member Metters says aye. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? All right, all those in favor? Select Board Member Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metters says aye. The third of our public hearings, please.
Mr. Chairman, the Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing at five thirty PM on Tuesday, July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three to consider a petition from N-Star Electric Company doing business as EverSource Energy to install one handhole fifteen, thirty-six and twenty feet plus or minus of four inch conduit, forty feet plus or minus of three inch conduit to a customer installed handhole to provide a new underground service to the customer at three oh three Main Street. The public is welcome to attend the meeting in person or participate via a link in the meeting's posted agenda. All interested parties are encouraged to participate, sign the select board.
Thank you again, Mr. Dykens. Once again, our EverSource representative?
Thank you very much. Yes, so again, we're proposing the install of two handholes, twenty feet of four inch conduit and forty feet of three inch conduit to accommodate the customer at three oh three Main.
All right. Questions or comments from the public? I don't see any hands up. All right, back to the board. Mr. Dyke, Mr. Castro.
Mr. Chairman, there is an incorrect date on the form of order in the middle paragraph, which begins, this is the third page in, the third paragraph, the underlined phrase, plan number dated May thirty-one, the date on the plan is actually June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. With that, I would move to close the public hearing unless there are comments from the board, otherwise.
I'm fine. Do we hear a second to the closing, closing of the public hearing?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Select Board Member Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
Select Board Member Metters says aye.
Move approval.
With the, with the amendment?
Yes.
All right.
Second.
All those in favor? Select Board Member Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metters says aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
All right, next on our agenda is a drought status update and discussion. We have our DPW director here this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. So in your agenda packets, just like to give a brief update to the drinking water projects pertaining to wells five and eight and also wells ten and eleven. I've also included a pumping comparison for the month of June as compared to historic pumping levels. Chatham Training Field Wells five and eight, temporary treatment at well five, the vessels online for the peak summer season with PFOS testing occurring monthly. We also completed the quarterly PFOS testing at well four, so we're waiting for both of those results to come back. At the permanent treatment facility for wells five and eight, state revolving fund construction loan has been approved for fifteen million dollars for low or no interest rates. That's the maximum allowable for this year. The Weston and Sampson Agreement for Engineering Services during construction is currently under review with the town. I believe we just signed off on that today. And the contractor prequalification process is still yet to begin, but we anticipate that occurring this month. For Chatham Wells ten and eleven, progress is continuing very nicely. Robert Hour is finishing the roof. Underground piping and conduit installation continues. A lot of the HVAC, excuse me, equipment, gas pumping has all been installed. You can see pictures in your packet. Interior work is continuing, the ceiling and ongoing construction is continuing there. The well adapters have also been installed and backfilled. The site is really coming along, starting to look like a pump station. So any questions on, on that part of the presentation?
Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Rob. I just had a question about the PFOS testing, which is occurring monthly on well five. Is PFOS testing being done on other wells?
No, this was because there was a positive test at some point. Mass DEP is requiring that we do monthly testing on well five.
Okay. Can you present those results to us when they occur?
Absolutely.
When we had multiple testing occurring, Dr. Dunkinson would routinely present like a matrix with, with all the test results. So it'd be nice to get that.
Okay, I can have that for the next meeting.
That's fine, thank you.
Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Metters. Wells ten and eleven, when are they, are they going to come online? This fall, Rob?
This fall, correct.
Like September or October or?
After the busy summer season here, but you know, the exact month is unknown at this point.
Okay. Are all our wells that nice?
Yeah, some of them are, some of them.
It's gorgeous. I want to move in.
Some of them will be by the, you know, given time, they'll, they'll have some kind of treatment.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. The pictures are great. I haven't been up there yet, but thanks.
All right, any additional comments from the board? All right, continue.
Thank you. So the June pumping comparison, there are charts in there, just shows comparison to June last year, but I'd really like to call your attention to, I hate to say it's a rainbow matrix, but that's exactly what it resembles. It really shows the pumping comparison from June pre-COVID, all the way back to June two thousand and nineteen. And this is a response, the comments received at, I believe it was the last select board meeting. It not only shows to the right-hand side in the yellow columns, this last June's pumping comparison, but it also shows every year previous for the previous five years. There are some interesting nuances here. June two thousand and twenty-three, only well eight was offline. June two thousand and twenty-two, same situation, but June two thousand and twenty-one, wells four and five were offline. So it's, it's still not an apples to apples. it's still not an apples-to-apples comparison because we've had so much fluctuation in our water supply, uh, it's kind of a moving target. So I think this is about the best we can look at as a, as a comparison, but there are still nuances involved that it may not be, you know, transparent on the surface.
Question, Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rob, thank you. Uh, I, we did ask for this and for a kind of a longitudinal look or historical look at, at pumping hours and utilization. I thought, I found it to be pretty interesting. You bring up a good point about the number of wells that are actually supplying water in this data, so I think that's an important nuance. You're, you're right. I look at the average daily pumpage hours just to see, you know, across the board, how many hours we're pumping, you know, from year to year to year. And, um, you know, uh, was really hit a high in 20 and 21 when, of course, that's COVID time and everybody's here and, and, you know, home. So, you know, I take some heart that, um, the average hours of pumping have gone down a bit or, you know, since that time period. Um, I, I would, if it's not too onerous, I would like to see this continue. Really, hopefully, all you do is drop in 23's numbers that, that there's some data set somewhere where it makes it easy to kind of pick up July's utilization going back in time. Just let us know if it's really onerous. If it is, then maybe we won't bug you, but.
It's, it's not. I really wanted to get the, the board's appetite for this and see if you were agreeable with this, with this method, and, and we can do it from now going forward.
I like it. I don't know what the rest of the board, but I, I really like it. I think it's great. Thank you. I think it's informative, very informative.
Mike.
Yeah, I, I think Jeff covered pretty much what I, uh, was taking away from this. Help me, uh, with the, how, I mean, to me, this is just really a, 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 a metric that gives us a, or set of metrics that tell us what, what usage was relative year to year. Um, and, and if that's accurate, I, I'd like you to help me, uh, to, to fit in the, the fact that we had different wells in operation, um, year to year. I mean, how does that, uh, play into the analysis that, or, or the inferences that we're drawing here?
So, for example, June 2021, which is the red column towards the center.
Yep.
Um, wells four and five were offline, so to meet that demand of 73 million gallons, those 410 hours, if we had more wells online.
So you're saying.
The pumps would be running less.
Affects the hours is, is how we should interpret the hour.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Dean.
Um, I echo what others have said. I think this is a very valuable matrix, and perhaps we could include as a footnote those years when the wells are, certain wells are offline, because if you do include that, the numbers seem to even out a little bit better, um, except for, of course, for the middle column, because that's really a, the height of COVID, um, as Jeff was saying. I did want to say that, well, I wanted to ask, um, I know Dr. Dunkinson is not on tonight. Are we in a situation at this point where there is any staff recommendation as to conservation restrictions? I know the Water and Sewer Committee met yesterday. They did not propose anything, and I wanted to say something about what they did as well in a moment.
So, um, you know, we were, we were at a level one drought, drought starting June 13th. The, they met again on July 6th, but they haven't updated their website, so we don't know if we're still in that status. Until they change it, we're still at the level one status. So the recommendations by the state is to, you know, more like education, conservation, be aware of, of the situation, but really to minimize outdoor watering to one time per week. That, that's the recommendation at a level one drought. Um, you know, what, what we do, we, we see typically that our wells are working hard starting around two in the morning. Uh, they come on typically when irrigation systems come on. By 5:00 AM, that's when we get the low level alarms. So we, I repeated, um, last month, we had a low level alarm, I think it was June 20th. We had one on July 7th. We also had one yesterday. Um, so those are, they had, just happened to be on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. So is that a coincidence based on timing of irrigation system? I mean, we, we really don't know, but, um, but it really is a, a difficult time for our wells to really, to make up that ground, that lost ground. When they hit that low water level, uh, the, the wells are typically working five to seven hours just to regain, uh, that momentum that was lost, so. Should we, should we follow that? I mean, that's a question for the board. Should we, should we minimize outdoor watering? That's, you know, the golden ticket here.
Thank you. I'm, I'm not proposing that we impose restrictions. I think this board has the tools to impose restrictions at any time we think it's appropriate. We do have a draft matrix from, that the committee presented to us. Yesterday, the committee discussed that, heard from members of the public. They're in the process of fine tuning that. Um, they will take it up at their next meeting, and then they'll present it to us for our consideration. But I would encourage anybody who is interested in this, and I hope everybody is, to watch the portion of the Water and Sewer Committee meeting from yesterday where this was discussed, because there were some interesting comments made, and this, as, as Rob was saying, um, the real problem occurs early, you know, late in the morning hours, I should say in the early morning hours, four or five o'clock, and it's really the irrigation systems that are on public water that are causing the issue. The matrix draft calls upon, um, watering to stop, all watering to stop, um, at seven o'clock, um, in the morning.
Seven, correct.
And the suggestion was made by, by Tom Barrow, who was, um, Rob's, uh, what's his title?
Deputy Director.
Deputy Director. Um, that maybe, um, uh, the matrix could be adjusted so that irrigation stops at seven o'clock, but hand watering or hose watering of gardens could continue until nine o'clock in the morning. I know that's one thing they were considering, but that's really a significant point, that it's the irrigation systems that are really, um, you know, try, uh, testing the, the whole distribution, um, production and distribution, um, uh, system of the town and, and, and our water and sewer. So, um, I, I know we have, we're using the electrical, the electric signs for beaches. I suppose we probably don't have any. It would be nice to have a sign that just encourages people voluntarily to, to conserve in their judgment. We could put those up somewhere in town or put it on the main sheet or whatever, just to encourage voluntary, uh, uh, page, um, control over their water usage, so. Those are my comments. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rob, I, if, uh, can we, what, what would us, what would happen if we had 10 and 11? I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit. Online in the summer? So it's going to come online in the fall, but assume that we had 10 and 11 now. With that, I would hope decrease the number of hours we're pumping and also increase the overall supply, so we wouldn't have these lower alarms. And then if, if, then bringing them on doesn't, then do we need more wells? And I, I don't mean to put you on the spot, you don't have to answer right now, but that, that's how we think. So, you know, we're, we're watering, we act as Water and Sewer Commissioners, well, we want enough water, um, by hook or by crook.
Sure.
Um, so we've asked repeatedly whether or not, and it's, the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee is also taking it up, so again, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but.
No, that's.
But those are the types of issues that, that we, that we really think about and want addressed. And this is very helpful, but I'd like to know if we did have 10 and 11 online, are we good to go? You know, I mean.
So wells 10 and 11 combined, they're about 750 gallons per minute.
Yeah.
But remember, so now we're going to have wells five and eight under construction, so.
Right.
They're going to be taken offline next summer. Uh, their 10 and 11 aren't as big of producers as five and eight, but even though eight is offline, it's been offline for a couple of years now, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so we're, we're going to be in a very similar situation next summer as we are now with, with the amount of supply.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Um, I, Tom Barr has his hand up if you want him to chime in too.
Sure, absolutely.
Hey, Tom.
Hey, guys. Sorry, I'm remote here today and messed up all practice, but, um, I just wanted to chime in on Dean's previous thing, so if we want to continue with what Rob was saying, we can, and then I can circle back on Dean's comment about the voluntary. Unless you want me to?
No, it's fine. Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, go.
Uh, so Dean mentioned putting the signboards out for voluntary restrictions. We do have sandwich boards that the Water Department has that has voluntary water restrictions, and we would put those out in the past. We could put those out in various spots throughout town to just make it available for the public to see, so maybe that might help curtail some of the excess watering.
Could help.
I think that would be great, because we should always be conscious of it and educate the public about it, regardless of the drought situation. Even if we didn't have level one, I would, those signs are good in the summertime.
Okay. Great, thanks.
All right. And Tom, do you have something else to add? I think, oh, yeah.
Uh, I think, I think we're good. Rob's pretty much nailed it with the water usage. With 10 and 11 coming on, we would gain it if everybody was there. Um, five will be on for a while, and then it will need to be shut off during construction. We will have everything except for eight for a short time, but, um, yeah, so that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Jeff, and then Mike.
So quickly, I don't have an irrigation system, but we've been really wet lately. We've had tons of rain, so one cannot turn an irrigation system on and off. Is it our timer that one can?
Rain sensor.
Right.
Should be a rain sensor.
It should be a rain sensor, okay, so.
Yeah.
So I would hope, with given the recent rains, that demand, that early morning demand for irrigation would de, would decline, I would hope, but again, I don't have one, so.
I guess I would encourage folks who have rain sensors to convert those to moisture sensors, because the rain sensor is typically will only indicate when it's actually raining, not how much moisture they've received recently, so there is a bit of a nuance there.
Yeah. Yeah, it would seem that the demand for irrigation of late would have decreased. I'll, I'll be quiet.
All right. Mike.
Yeah, two things. One, I, I, I mean, I'm, I, I endorse Dean's suggestion that we jawbone people to, to, to conserve, um, sort of in a voluntary way, just as good citizens. I think that's great. Uh, I just wanted to test, um, the, 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 the comment about the, the signs that say something about voluntary restrictions. I, I'm not sure it would be a good thing to have signs out that make it sound like we've enacted some sort of a restriction. As long as they're clear that they are just encouragements to be good citizens, I think that's fine. Um, the other thing is, uh, and I think I mentioned this when we went through this last summer as well, I, I, I do talk to landscapers a little bit, um, here and there, uh, and, and they're very, very conscious of the issue, they, they have to deal with clients, but they're also, um, in a lot of ways, best equipped to help administer a, you know, voluntary efforts, including, uh, managing systems to the, to, to the amount of rain that we're getting. I mean, they can come turn them on or off, or lower them, or change the days. They can do a lot of things that can be very helpful, uh, and I don't know how we do that administratively to, to try to encourage them or indeed enlist them as, um, helpers in this effort, but I would, I would encourage us to try to figure out a way to do that.
All right. Additional thoughts? Rob? Are we?
I'm all set.
All set? Um, yeah, I mean, I do, yeah, before, before I go to the public, um, but just one, one question about the irrigations, you know, the early morning pumpage that we're identifying with irrigation systems. There's a, there's irrigation systems on the town system. How close are we to really identifying how, that what that number actually is? Because I know this, we've been chasing that for a while. Um, you know, we, we've encouraging people to get off the town systems and put separate meters in, all the efforts we've been put in place. Uh, some people have stepped forward and taken action. I know some people, other people are waiting to get meters installed because contractors are tied up, so they're in process, but do you think we've really captured the true number, or do you think we've got a bit of a, a void in what that actual number really is?
I think we'll have a pretty accurate percentage, you know, a high percentage, maybe in the 80, 90%, but we have to get through this season first before we can establish that. Typically, we, we bill people with irrigation meters in a certain geographic area, uh, every month, so they may get hit in, you know, North Chatham in June and South Chatham in July, and it's kind of, as, as the billing gets cycled through, we'll have a better understanding of that. Again, there were, I think, last month, it was like 255 people were waiting for contractors to install them, and we had another, I don't know, 50-something that were, uh, that hadn't been billed yet, so.
Okay.
So until we get like a full season with all irrigation meters installed, I, I think there'll still be, will be some gaps, but we'll have a much better understanding.
All right, great. Open up to public comments, starting with the audience in, in the house tonight. Anyone from the audience have a question or comment on Rob's presentation? Is there anyone online that?
It's Ms. Gibbs.
Elaine, please go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Um, this is going back to wells five and eight. I don't know how I could have missed it, but this is the first time I've heard that wells five and eight are going to be taken offline next summer. My understanding was, you know, all the work we've been doing, we put in the iron and manganese filtration so that we could put in the PFAS filter, um, and it's costing a lot of money. So why, why, I thought it was going to be, once all that was done, there would be some minor work to be done, and then a switch would be flipped, and they were going to be fully operational. And now we're saying that they're going to be off, how long are they going to be offline next summer? And do we have to do, be offline in the summer rather than, I don't know, April?
So, so construction documents will be going out to bid this fall, and really, a lot of that is determined by the contractor's schedule. Of course, we'll work with them to, to try to massage that, to meet our needs, um, but the temporary vessel that's at well five will need to be reused inside the new building. So at some point, it will have to be disconnected, disassembled, and reassembled inside the building along with all the other vessels that we need to install. So there will be a point in time where well five is offline. Can't exactly predict the timing of that. Of course, well eight has been offline for some time. Um, that's a very high-producing well, so I really look forward to getting that well back in service. I think it's around 900 gallons per minute.
So, so are we saying that right now, those wells, if we brought them online, do not have the iron and manganese and the PFAS treatment installed yet?
That's correct. Only well five has PFAS treatment, no iron and manganese, and it's only a temporary vessel. It's not meant to be used in the winter because it's outside, it could freeze.
Oh, I, man, I, I thought, I think most of the public was under the impression that five and eight had, had that done, because we've, we appropriated millions.
Right, and it has been approved. Sure, it has been approved, it just hasn't been constructed yet.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Elaine. Just no questions, comments? Well, Rob, thank you very much, and we'll see you in probably two weeks. All right. Now, we're going to go with public comments on our business agenda. Once again, the items for the, our regular business agenda are our year-end transfers, the Summer Residence Advisory Committee request to conduct a survey of Summer Residents and Review Drafts, Draft Survey, Special Town Meeting warrant article review for the Belt Filter Press Project, low lying road study, road selections, and the release of executive minutes. And then the appointments are for the board only. So is there any questions or comments from the audience on our regular business agenda this evening?
Yes, it looks like Ms. Gibbs online.
All right. Ms. Gibbs, please.
This is my last time. Okay, this is in reference to item six, the, the Belt to Press Project supplemental funding. I have a couple of questions and then a couple of alternatives as to where we can get the funding. I guess my first question is, why weren't we asked for the full 5.8 million at the annual town meeting? I know that number was out there. I thought that's actually what we were trying to approve. And the next one is regarding the intermunicipal agreement with Harwich, which was signed on June 2017. That was five years ago. We've only received the first payment back then, which was for, I don't know, 6.75 million, something like that. So my, my other question is, when are we flipping the switch on that? Because construction has been going on a long time in Harwich and on Meeting House Road, and so that we can start the clock. It seems like that probably, you know, it's, it's very slow, five years. There are two points in the contract that we have with them and the intermunicipal agreement where I think we should look to for some dollars. One is under the operating and maintenance expenses in this, the arrangement with Harwich is that normally, once they begin connection, that they would pay include but not limited to, to plant maintenance, plant maintenance, SCADA contracts, director's salary. And because they have taken, we sold them 300,000 gallons per day, which is 23.08% of the total capacity we have for treatment. This belt scraper, or this belt press is being bought in anticipation of the fact that the old one, it could break at any time. And if they were connected today, they would be paying some of those costs, 20% of those costs, which is about $1.3 million that you're looking for. And it seems to me, since we're doing this in anticipation and being prudent, that that's something that should be investigated, that despite the fact that we haven't flipped the switch, if we delayed it six months or a year, when the switch is flipped, they would be paying for that portion. And the second section is the capacity purchase fees. Again, it's 300,000 gallons. We received the first check. It does say the, the future installments, that a third payment of 1.5 million shall be made upon an average daily flow of over 50,000 gallons per day or five years from the date of the signed contract, whichever occurs first. Well, what occurred first was the fact that we should be paid that now. We're at five years. Five years was up on June of 2022. So I think that that, we should have been paid that 1.5 million in addition to the original payment because it said whichever comes first, and it hasn't been paid. And that would cover the cost of this as well. So I would hope you would look at those as alternatives because I think that this is a huge expense and Harwich is taking 23% of the capacity, which impacts the belt filter press. And I think they should be paying for a portion of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Any, oh, Ms. Timson?
I just have one very quick question because I think the hearing ideas, two hearings is a wonderful idea. But will there be an opportunity for us prior to those hearings to give you a series of questions that are important to us to be answered before we vote? Rather than, because people were very limited as to what they could say and how long they could speak.
Are you referring to Mike's suggestion?
Yes, I am.
We haven't discussed that. It was brought up tonight, so I really don't have a response to that.
Okay. So in other words, we might not get a chance prior? You don't know yet.
It was, it was, well, Mike, respond to his.
I'll take your question as a proposed amendment to my suggestion, and, and I, I think it's a good suggestion and I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. All right. We're going to move on to our business agenda, starting with the year-end transfers. We have our Finance Director, Alex Halela, online, I believe. Hi, Alex.
Good evening. How are you tonight?
Good.
Okay. This is my annual plea for transfers of funds from one budget to the other. As you know, our fiscal year ended just on June 30th, 2023. We're in the process of doing the cleanup warrant, so we have until Ju, July 15th to process any invoices that come in during the 15 days of the new fiscal year. So that's underway right now. So I do have some updated figures for the agenda report that were not included. So again, per Mass General Law, the Select Board, along with the concurrence of the Finance Committee, may authorize transfer appropriations from one budget to another. In your package tonight, we're requesting that we transfer 377,750 from debt service to the DPW budget and 112,000 from employee benefits. Most go into the DPW budget and some to the insurance budget. So synopsis of that is 377,750 from debt service and 112,000 from employee benefits, with the money going 477,750 to the Department of Public Works, specifically facilities, and 12,000 going to the insurance budget. And as noted in the memo, the Finance Committee now has set an meeting for this Friday, July 14th, at 2:00 PM. It will be virtual, so they will review the action that the board takes tonight and review these transfers and vote upon them as we need both the Select Board and the Finance Committee's approval for the budget transfers. And just so the public knows, some of the reasons why we have the leftover money in these budgets, specifically in the debt service budget, was we had expected the Clean Water Trust 18-24 to close in FY 2023, but it did not. So it was only an interim note, but we had budgeted 377,750 to close in 2023. It has since closed, and the first debt service we paid in 2024, but we can't carry that money over. It would close to free cash, so we're asking, again, to transfer that money to cover a shortfall in another budget. And then with insurance, I'm sorry, employee benefits, we had some money left over in health insurance, so we're asking, that's where the 112,000 is coming to fund both the DPW and the insurance budget. At this time, going through the cleanup warrant, as we call it, there is now, instead of 96.93% expended, we're now 97.5% expended as of today, and we do expect a few more invoices to trickle in before the end of the week. And then some encumbrances for bills that were not received as of the date of the cleanup warrant, so we'd like to have some money left over. So moving to page three of the agenda report, the debt service budget now, after the amount of transfer requests, the balance after the transfer is now 3,408. And the Department of Public Works, the balance after the transfer is not 323,531, it's now 174,356 remaining, and we might well receive some additional invoices prior to the closing of the warrant. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on this.
All right. Thank you, Alex. Questions or comments from the board? Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alex, so are you saying that with respect, with respect to the debt, debt service, that we're using money that we would have otherwise used to pay back a loan we got under the Clean Water Trust? Is that what that is? We're not using the Clean Water Trust money to make this transfer?
Yeah, no, we're not using Clean Water Trust money. The interim loan, the CW 18-24 was an interim loan in FY 2023. We had originally expected it to close in FY 2023. However, it did not close in FY 2023. There was only an interim, interim loan. So it's now been permanently financed, so we didn't have to pay any principal back on that. It's only principal, it's not interest. So that's why that money is still available.
Okay. And with respect to the freeze at the DPW, that was the cause of the increased need for DPW money, did we have any insurance proceeds that were available to cover that event?
Yeah, no, we, we didn't have any insurance proceeds to cover that. Again, it was a catastrophic event. We looked, we always looked to insurance to cover it. As you know, we have a $25,000 deductible per event, although the, it was extreme damage. We did replace the, I think we ripped out the carpeting, so some of that wouldn't have been covered anyway. And again, it was the best way to do it, to handle it. But that did cause some of that, along with some of the library maintenance for their HVAC system caused some of that overage, and then the increased gas and, gas prices and bathroom cleaning line items.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that the board vote to approve the transfer of 377,750 from debt service budget and 112,000 from the employee benefits budget to, transfer to 477,750 to the DPW budget and 12,000 to the insurance budget.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Select Board Member Nocastro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
Select Board Member Metter says aye. All right. Thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
Next is the Summer Residence Advisory Committee request to conduct a survey of Summer Residents and review, and a review, a draft survey from the, we have the Subcommittee Chair, Stuart Green, from SREC. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've distributed three pages, I believe, to each of the board describing what we propose to do. And it's almost self-explanatory, but the, the summary is really to obtain input from the Summer Residents in a more comprehensive fashion, something that we've really not done before. In the past, we've done maybe on-street interviews or something sporadic. This is a first attempt to be more comprehensive, to get input from the Summer Residents who are pretty elusive. Some of them are here only two weeks a year, some are here the entire summer. The, the goal is to learn what's on their minds, to see if there's anything that we have overlooked as a Summer Residents Advisory Committee. And we feel that driving it to the town website is the most practical solution. In addition, we have other means of driving the traffic to the, the website through different Facebook and social media. So we're asking the Select Board's permission to initiate the survey as soon as possible. As you're aware, the summer is moving very quickly, and it's going to take several weeks to gather substantial data. So we're anxious to move forward as soon as possible. And we're trying to be respectful both of the town, Summer Residents, their time and ways to reach them, and we're also conscious that we're not trying to stir up any hot issues that might embarrass anyone in, in the town. We're not looking for scapegoats, we're not looking for any kind of flagrant abuses. We're, we're looking for concrete areas that are meaningful, and we hope to report on a weekly basis to the Summer Residents Advisory Committee, of which two of you are currently members or advisors to us. So that's really the summary of this. I know there's been some antagonism of, of issues surrounding the Summer Residents Advisory Committee, open issues, but we, we really don't want to hold the Summer Residents hostage. We want to get the input as soon as possible, and I think we're open to any suggestions for training or whatever regarding the past, any past issues that are of concern. But we're, our real concern is on the, getting the survey out for the, the data accumulation. And I think it'll be a, a thing of value for the town as well. So that's all I had to say.
Thank you very much. Just in complete transparency, it's definitely been, been a busy day with the town manager, myself, and Stuart, and Summer Residence Advisory Committee Chairman Jamie Meehan and whatever. We recognize the, the timing element of this request. I don't have any issues with it. I think we've also identified what Stuart has alluded to, making sure that the Subcommittee of the Summer Residence Advisory Committee adheres to all the required open meeting laws, and if, and they may, they've asked if there's any proper guidance or training or elements that could help them make sure that they adhere to all the mechanics of, of that process. They're more than willing to do that. I do know Pat, I think Pat is still on, Pat is on in case there's any questions for the board on, on any of this. But I think we've identified that the Subcommittee has to adhere to certain protocols, just like any other appointed group by the Select Board, and that we're going to work with them as far as posting meetings, times, locations, and making sure everything is mechanically done so that the work for this survey, or frankly, anything else that the Subcommittee has put forth, is done so in the proper manner so that, you know, that it's brought back to the main body of the Summer Residence Advisory Committee and theoretically transmitted back to us at some point is done with all proper protocols. So.
That's correct.
I will open up to the board for questions or comments. Shereen?
Thank you for the clarification on the issues that were going on with SREC and, and that they're being resolved. Corey, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Green, for coming. Anytime we gather information from our, our residents, whether they're summer or year round, I think it's really an important thing. The town's shifting a lot and changing a lot, and we just don't know who is around us oftentimes in our neighborhoods. So I appreciate the effort that you guys are putting forth here, and I look forward to seeing the results.
Thank you.
Now, Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you, Stuart. I, I support what you're trying to do. I think it's a good idea. I like the question that asks how long people are staying in Chatham when they're here for the summer. Just one question. You're contemplating advertising in the newspaper, depending on cost. Do you, there is a fiscal note for this committee, about $1,800 or whatever. I don't remember exactly what it is.
Yes, there is.
Is there fund, and some of that money is used for advertising for your annual Summertown meeting. Will there be funds in the, sufficient funds in account to do some advertising for this as they contemplate, or do we know?
Yeah, so I have to look exactly what is. I don't qualify if it's 2,000 or 1,800, but it's the very start of the fiscal year. So I know that they, at the Summer Residents Advisory Committee meeting, have been receiving treasurer's reports and talk about earmarking funds for certain purposes.
Okay. Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, I thank you for, for bringing this forward. I think it's a good idea. I think, as Shereen said, particularly understanding, communication, back and forth, sense of different perspectives are, are all very useful, and I think the more communication, the better. So appreciate it, and I would, would endorse this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff?
And same here. I echo the comments of my fellow Select Board members, and it will be interesting to hear the results. So, good idea. Thanks.
And I, I too, I endorse, you know, supporting the survey process, and I do appreciate your communication and, and willingness to, you know, let us assist and guide and train in whatever needs to be done so we stay in compliance with the open meeting laws and all the Subcommittee requirements for the Summer Residents Advisory Committee. So I do appreciate your, your openness to, to do our communication and move forward on that one, so.
Thank you.
With that, I would like a motion. Yes, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board endorse the proposal of the Summer Residents Advisory Committee relative to the proposed survey.
Second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor? Select Board Member Nocastro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Special Town Meeting warrant article review, Belt Filter Press Project Supplement Funding, transfer from Wastewater Capital Stabilization Fund, a vote to place and recommend. We have our Finance Director, Alex Halela, back. Welcome back, Alex.
Thank you again. Welcome again. Yes, tonight, we're asking to place the Belt Filter Press, Belt Filter Press additional appropriation on the Special Town Meeting warrant. As you might recall, Annual Town Meeting approved Article 28 for $4,500,000, and that was a debt exclusion approved at both town meeting and at the ballot. As you might recall, the board did review a cost estimate of up to 5.8 million, and during that time, we had noticed that the Belt Filter Press was on the state's intended use plan, the IUP, for the Clean Water Trust State Revolving Fund, for up to $5 million in eligible costs. So looking at this, this article is requesting the $1.3 million, which is the difference between the 4.5 that was approved at Annual Town Meeting and the total 5.8 million cost, which includes design and engineering, which is not eligible for the Clean Water Trust reimbursement, as well as some other items that might not be eligible for reimbursement through the Clean Water Trust, which is the 0% interest loans. The funding source for this article is the newly established Wastewater Capital The funding source for this article is the newly established wastewater capitalization, capital stabilization fund, which currently has a balance of $6,136,000. And to Mrs. Gibbs' point, that is made up of the original payment of the $2,265,000 from the IMA funds that was approved at town meeting to transfer into that, as well as additional funds that were received, another milestone payment of $1.5 million received in January 2023, as well as Harwich's share of the Phase 1D for East Harwich, Suing the East Harwich and Connecting Inn. And that was $2,371,000 that was received. And so that makes up the $6.1 million in the wastewater capitalization, capital stabilization fund. Using the capital stabilization fund means that we don't have to borrow for this. So that is a relief to taxpayers because we have this money. It's specifically earmarked for wastewater purposes. And even though, you know, some of this money may be eligible for 0% interest, not all of it would be. So we were saving interest as well as principal payments for the taxpayers. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm just looking to see what else was asked. Yeah, and we do expect more milestone payments as well as the O and M billing for the operations and maintenance at the 23% capacity fee. We do have an invoice ready for Harwich right now, so we're just reviewing that, and that will be billed as well.
All right, thank you, Alex. I have two questions, actually. So one for clarification. So the third payment from the IMA from Harwich of $1.5 million has been processed or has not?
We received two milestone payments.
Okay. And then?
And there was an amendment to the IMA to extend it a little bit due to the delay, I think due to COVID and getting Harwich up online.
Okay. And going back to Ms. Gibbs' original question about the dollar amount that was in our warrant article at town meeting, can you just explain the difference one more time, please?
The $4.5 million was originally presented for the capital plan. And then we did talk about the $5.8 million, which includes the design and engineering. Unfortunately, what was included in the annual town meeting warrant and notice to the voters was the $4.5 million. So we're looking to get the whole $1.3 million through the wastewater capitalization fund to, you know, which would fund the design and engineering as well as some of those other items that may not qualify for the 0% loans.
All right, thank you. Mike.
Yeah, I think this is pretty clear. I appreciate your explanation. Obviously, I'm in favor of it. The one piece of Ms. Gibbs' series of questions that I'm not sure has been addressed, and I wonder if you could address it, and that is the notion that somehow Harwich would have, either under current circumstances or under rearranged circumstances, obligation to pick up some of the cost of the belt filter press itself.
I'd have to review. I don't have the IMA in front of me right now, but I think the capital is all on the town of Chatham because they've purchased the capacity fee. So we had the original IMA, which is the milestone payments. However, the O and M billing, the 23% is based on it. So I don't have that answer right now definitively. I'd have to go back and review the IMA. Unfortunately, I don't have that in front of me.
Okay, and that's fine. I understand. Could I just ask that you do that and reassure us that we're on solid ground with the approach that we're taking here?
Yes, and if there is something that we could bill that back, I'm sure we would.
Yep, thank you.
Jeff, go straight down.
Yeah, no, I don't recall that Harwich is on the hook for any kind of capital improvements. They are on the hook for the operational costs of processing their waste, if you will, based on gallons processed. And they're on the hook for the initial down payment and the progress payments that they've made thus far. So I think totaling six something million, if I recollect, but that's my recollection.
All right. Shereen? Offside? Dean.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Dykens. Both he and I were on the negotiating team, and that's my recollection as well, that the O and M, the 23% is for straight O and M, but you're going to check that anyway. Alex, if you mentioned that it was the $4.5 million that was presented to the voters back in May. If the full $5.8 million was, had been presented to the voters, was it the intent to borrow that $1.3? Or was, or you said a couple of minutes ago that not all of, not all, that the design costs are not eligible for the state loan program. So I'm not sure what we would have gone to the voters for on the $1.3 million anyway. Or am I missing something?
No, that is correct. I think had we presented it at annual town meeting, we probably would have requested the full $5.8. However, only $5 million is approved under the IUP. The $800,000 would not be eligible. But again, looking at, reviewing the numbers, and what we've looked at is that probably the $1.3 might not be eligible for reimbursement under the Clean Water Trust. So again, this is why we're requesting it to come from the capital stabilization fund and not a debt, not borrowing.
Are all the loans under the Clean Water Trust zero interest?
For wastewater and storm water, sometimes they qualify. For water, they're at 2%. But again, we have to go through the process, and they have to be approved by the Clean Water Trust for that 0%.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that we vote to place the belt filter press article for $1.3 million on the warrant.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? Select board member Castro?
Aye.
Select board member Davis?
Aye.
Select board member Dykens?
Aye.
Select board member Shell?
Aye.
Select board member Metter says aye.
Mr. Chairman, I vote to recommend the belt filter press article for $1.3 million with funding from the wastewater capital stabilization fund.
We'll hear a second. All those in favor? Select board member Castro?
Aye.
Select board member Davis?
Aye.
Select board member Dykens?
Aye.
Select board member Shell?
Aye.
And select board member Metter says aye. All right. Thank you, Alex. All right. Again, item number D, no action. We'll move on to item number E, low-lying road study, road selection. Ted. Ted Keon. Good evening.
Good evening. Just for the record, Ted Keon, Coast Resource Director. Provided you folks with a memo regarding this study that's been ongoing for the past year, sponsored, if you will, by the Cape Cod Commission. They actually undertook this beginning, well, this is their second year. There was an earlier round where a number of other Cape communities signed on to it. They're kind of coming to the conclusion of their two-year study. And then this past year, they initiated another round that basically now has all the Cape towns, you know, under this study umbrella, if you will, looking at low-lying roads, looking at current storm surge vulnerability, as well as future sea level rise and so forth. So it's an interesting and frankly, very complex analysis that they're undertaking. And I hope will provide some very fruitful results for all the communities. So to summarize sort of where we are at this stage, they have completed somewhat their technical analysis, where they ran some very sophisticated modeling. They looked at some projected sea level rises to come up with sort of a target, if you will. They didn't pick the highest sea level rise that you might expect over the next, you know, numbers of years and decades. They took sort of a more midpoint and then ran a series of models with projected storm surges and so forth. So if you do go to the website, there is a lot of information on their low-lying road project. The goal, obviously, is to identify the vulnerable roads within the various communities. And they did that for Chatham. I think many of us who are familiar with storm situations and the road systems were pretty familiar with some of them. There definitely were some areas that I wouldn't have thought of off the top of my head, but, you know, came out as a very vulnerable road. What was interesting, and I can completely understand how and why they did this. They, and the goal of this is to sort of identify the critical roads that, you know, have a large impact, those which are vulnerable and those which have a large critical impact to the community. Their impact assessment, if you will, was sort of focused on, and I provide those in a bullet form in my memo, access to community services, emergency, and so forth. If your fire station is along a vulnerable road and they can't get out, that's a big deal, obviously. Another one is the usage and network. So just to be very simple, Route 6, pretty important road. If that ran through Chatham and it were vulnerable, that would be a very high critical factor. A fourth one was impacts to vulnerable neighborhoods, populations, environmental justice-type populations, et cetera. Chatham, fortunately, doesn't really have that type of a population. We do have some very minor areas, but again, not that we're in located, invulnerable areas. And then again, a fairly obvious one, roads that would really impact business, community, and business density and so forth. Probably a good example of that would be P-Town Commercial Street, which is very vulnerable. The reason I'm highlighting is even though those were their standards that they utilized throughout the Cape, we're frankly fortunate, if you want to consider it that, that a lot of those factors aren't that relevant to Chatham. And we highlighted this when they had their intro discussion with us to sort of review these results. What we presented, and they completely understood, that our concerns are more, can you access certain neighborhoods once these roads get impacted? If there are alternative routes around a vulnerable road, then you just wait till that road is less vulnerable and you go around it. But if there are only one way to get to a neighborhood and you can't get there, that's a big deal. And that's what we focused on relative to identifying what we thought were some of the more critical roads for assessment. So what we recommended were, you know, we're supposed to pick three to four, we're picking four, to provide a site visit with the study team from the commission to go out, look at these various segments that we've identified, and get their input, whether to, to the technical feasibility of whether this road is really feasibly correctable, if you will, what environmental issues might be associated with it if we were to try to provide corrective solutions. And then they would pick two primary ones, that they would actually then develop some conceptual plans in order to propose solutions. Now, these are only conceptual plans. They are not, you know, if we pick two and they come up with a plan, there's no funding associated with. This is really a tool for the town to then assess whether we want to pursue this type of implementation. The other good aspect of it is that many of our road systems are probably similar in what the issue is and what the corrective solution may be. So we may be able to transfer some of those ideas for other roads that we may feel, for whatever reason, are a higher or a different priority. So the roads that we initially selected in presenting to you folks to see if you concur or have your own favorites, if you will, was the Morris Island Road. I think that's been fairly obvious, that that road, when it gets wet, and it does, you basically have no access to Morris Island and Stage Island, and that's a big deal. The whole Little Beach area, we're very familiar with, is a problem area. I didn't indicate that one of the other criteria that we sort of weeded the roads out was keeping it to roads within our jurisdiction, not private roads and not roads under mass DOT jurisdiction. There are some, like Route 28 near Ryder's Cove, that are probably important, but they're mastak. And frankly, you do have some alternative routes to go around them. So Morris Island Road, you know, was a highly ranked road in the sense of its vulnerability. And we felt it was a legitimate contender to look at relative to its impact to access. The other one that frankly wasn't really on my radar screen, and the more I looked at the results and the impact sort of circle, I realized it's a very important one, and that's Ridgevale Road. Ridgevale Road does have some low-lying areas adjacent to marsh systems on the south side. And it has some large community, you know, issues as far as, you know, if that goes under, you may not be able to get to a large portion of that neighborhood in the Ridgevale Beach area. So that was another one that we felt was, you know, a good candidate. Then two other ones in North Chatham, again, weren't necessarily on my initial radar screen. The first one being Fox Hill Road, because you think Fox Hill, going by Eastward Ho, is pretty high elevation, except by Crow's Pond. Crow's Pond is a very low-lying area by the landing I'm referring to. And again, if that gets wet, you basically lose access to that whole rest of, you know, that portion of North Chatham. So that one, we thought was a good candidate for looking for solutions. And then a sort of a somewhat similar one was on the other side of Crow's Pond, near Seepine Road. Again, directly adjacent to the southern portion of Crow's Pond, there's a small kind of association beach there. Again, if that gets underwater, you will have a, you know, difficult access to all those homes in that portion of North Chatham. So those were the ones that staff had come up with. There were some other ones that were recommended that in further discussion, we kind of concluded, well, it's a very vulnerable road, but it may only impact a few homes, two, three, four, five, something in that order. And again, you know, picking like, something like Bridge Street, very important road, but if it gets wet, there's other alternative ways to get around it. So we really didn't want to focus on alternative access opportunities, but really the one-way-in, one-way-out type situation. So those were the four that we came up with. I will completely admit, there's a level of subjectivity in this. If the board really has some, you know, favorites that they think might be more worthy, you know, we're absolutely open to proposing those. So I'll bring it back to you folks if you have any thoughts.
Questions or comments from the board? I'm sure there could be a couple. Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Metters. Yeah, thanks, Ted. Obviously, no argument with Morris Island and the vicinity of Little Beach, that area. But we've had experience with the flooding there, and certainly Morris Island Road, you cut off, you know, Morris to Stage Islands. At first glance, the Fox Hill Road near Crow's Pond Landing Inn on the other side in Seepine, I was scratching my head, to be honest with you. But now that I've heard you explain that you took into consideration the amount of downstream, excuse the metaphor, homes that might be affected by flooding there, then I think that makes more sense to me now than it did when I read your, when I read your memo. And I got to kind of familiarize myself with, between Cranberry Lane and Patterson Road.
Me too.
Yeah, yeah, on Ridgevale. I know Ridgevale well, and I can't, at least right now, imagine where it is. But almost when you get down to the beach, down that way, yes.
Yeah, it really runs by, you know, the marsh system over there. It's very low-lying, and you have a whole neighborhood to the west of it that would be essentially cut off. And I completely share the Fox Hill-Seepine. I just picture Fox Hill as way up here, and it's got that low area, and you can't get to that other area after that floods.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with flooding there at all, but I mean, it could, I would think. We are familiar with Bridge Street flooding, and the corner of Route 28, Ryder's Cove deep, that floods, it can flood. Down towards Stage Harbor has flooded. When you, you know, after you go by Bridge Street and you get towards, you know, Stage Harbor, Harbor Masters, that's flooded down there before. So there are other areas in town that I think have experienced more flooding. Now, that may not impact as many homes as you're suggesting. So with that, you know, with that definition, if you will, or that criteria, I should say, then, you know, your suggestions make sense, but.
It was interesting, one of the higher critical roads that was identified was Champlain.
Right.
Because of that just one small dip.
Yeah.
Which, again, I get from a vulnerability.
Yeah.
And, but you can get there from other ways.
Yeah.
So you just go around, you know, the other way.
Yeah. Anyway, those are my thoughts. I mean, I think it's a great study. I think it's, you know, probably overdue, and here we go. Those are my thoughts. and here we go. Those are my thoughts.
Shereen, then Dean.
Thank you. Thanks, Ted. I, you know, I have the same feelings that Jeff did, you know, when I first listened, read this. But obviously, the explanations speak, speak to what the, you know, what the criteria was for selecting these different sites. I think this is a really great idea. I mean, if we're going to get some corrective measure, you know, recommendations and things, and moving this into a bigger project, it will only benefit us to understand that. So I'm, I'm fine with the selection and look forward to moving forward recommending this.
The, the one that I did, you know, because we've highlighted it, the Morris Island Road's going to be a challenge. Not only is it long, but it's got environmental issues, you know, galore, as, as do many of these. So that's going to be one of the more interesting challenges on a lot of these technical assessments, is how do you raise a road directly adjacent to important wetland resources and not have major impacts? And then if you're raising a road that's technically feasible, and then you have a number of homes along the side of that road that you now can't get up to that road, I mean, it's, it's going to be a challenge. And this is, you know, being faced by all the communities along the Cape. We're probably one of the lower critical ones in many ways.
Dean?
Thank you. Thank you, Ted. I took a question first. A few years ago, we bought the Vector truck. What kind of use is that getting? And I know we've used it on the Little Beach in the past.
Yeah. I mean, I can only think of a couple times at least. Maybe there's three or four in total. I may be out of touch on that. It's been helpful. I don't know that that's necessarily, you know, the best solution for some of these areas, obviously. But it definitely has helped to access some of these areas.
Okay. I was contacted by a resident who inquired about whether, about Old Wharf Road. And I was wondering if that was something that you had thought about. Apparently, back in 2010, there was some examination of the issue there.
Old Wharf was absolutely one of those, like, the obvious. I mean, it gets wet frequently. The issue, again, utilizing some of the prioritization sort of factors that the commission was arguing for, I kind of indicated that they're suggesting that the town pick those with large-impact areas. Old Wharf, you know, you can go from one side and you can go from the other side, and there's only two or three homes in between. Not that that's not important for those two or three homes. But they didn't sort of, you know, that, that road didn't rise to the level of, let's adjust, you know, or let's develop assessment for that, and then leave a whole neighborhood in North Chatham or South Chatham, you know, out of the picks, if you will.
But as you said earlier, if we do this, this study and we get the corrective solutions, we might be able to apply that template.
Absolutely.
To some of those templates.
That's, that's what I'm actually hoping for, that, and, and we won't even be, you know, relying on just ours. As these other communities face almost very, very similar situations, I'm sure there will be, you know, considerable transferability between the different, you know, concepts for, you know, us and other towns. So I am, I am looking forward to that. And then we can prioritize that. Maybe we don't want to spend whatever the cost may be for one of the ones we've picked, but that same solution can be applied to a smaller road and more manageable, and we could prioritize that perhaps first.
Well, I'm okay with your selections, so, and thank you for, for your response.
Yeah, I, I don't have anything really to add, what my colleagues have said. I, I think these are good. I mean, Morris Island is obviously very, very obvious a choice. The other three, I think you've made the case that they're good laboratories for looking at the problem and studying possible solutions, and maybe they're applicable elsewhere. So thanks very much for this. I think it's a good, good project.
No problem.
Ted, thank you for your presentation. I mean, I will echo, again, Morris Island Road. Clearly understood why that's on, and I can relate to the Ridge Vale Road area between Cranberry and Patterson. It's, I mean, that, that area just kind of drops and goes low. So I can understand why that made the list. And, you know, the other two, I can respect. So I'm forward, you know, moving this forward, and, you know, hopefully we can make some progress and see what the results are and see what templates are made and what we can act on, so.
I do want to shout out, and I indicated, we got some very valuable input from the Energy and Climate Action Committee, particularly Jared Stahl. He had some very good thoughts. One of the roads that he did highlight that we wrestled with a little bit was the Barn Hill Road. And again, just the one spot by Sulfur Springs, because if you can't get by that, there are a lot of houses that you can't get to. The reason we didn't pick that was that that had a much lower probability of being flooded than some of these other areas. So it definitely should be on our radar screen as a high-impact type road, but it's not the likelihood of it being vulnerable sooner than some of these other ones. So just wanted to throw that out there. But it was a very good proposed, you know, site.
All right. Would someone like to make a motion to endorse this?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, Select Board Member Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. Thank you, Ted.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next is consider release of executive session minutes for November 21st, 2017, April 2nd, 2018, July 16th, 2018, August 13th, 2018, October 22nd, 2018, February 26th, 2019, and August 26th, 2019. Questions or comments from the board? Dean?
Mr. Chairman, I assume this is part of our regular review, periodic review of executive session minutes, and I'm happy to see them before us. I'm okay with all of them. I would just point out that on the July 16th, 2018, we should insert the word "session" up at the top. It just says "executive minutes." But I'm prepared to offer a motion to both approve the minutes and to authorize their release.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I'll make that a motion.
Second.
Okay, further discussion? Seeing none, okay. Select Board Member Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. Final actions this evening are appointments. We're going to start with the Airport Commission. We have three openings. We have four candidates. So I will open up the first slot for nominations.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move to appoint Sean Hobek to the Airport Commission until June 30th, 2026, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Do I hear?
Second.
Second. Do I hear any other nominations for that first slot? Seeing none. All those in favor of Sean Hobek? Select Board Member Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. There is a second slot for the Airport Commission. I will accept nominations.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I nominate Mike Galen to, I move to appoint Mike Galen to the Airport Commission until June 30th, 2026, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Do I hear any?
Second.
Second, sorry. Do I hear any further nominations for that solution, position? None. All right. All those in favor say aye. Sorry, all those in favor, Select Board Member Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. The final slot for the Airport Commission, I will accept nominations.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to appoint Ted Burke to the Airport Commission until June 30th, 2026, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Further nominations? Seeing none. Select Board Member Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. Now, we have the Historical Commission. We have two alternate terms. We have actually only one candidate, so I will accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
I move to appoint Robert B. Stevens to the Historical Commission until June 30th, 2026, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Mr. Chairman, I think the motion needs to be
Yeah, you're right.
He's appointed as an alternate.
As an alternate, yes.
Until June 30th, 2024.
I will amend my motion to appoint Mr. Stevens to the Historical Commission as an alternate member until June 30th, 2026.
Good catch.
Unless, or a successor is appointed.
2024, isn't it? Because it's a, it's an alternate position.
Usually, excuse me, usually they are one-year appointments for
24.
And I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor, Select Board Member Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. Again, we have no action on the convenement of the Affordable Housing Trust, and our Affordable Housing Trust executive session has been canceled for this evening. So with all that being said, I have one final motion to entertain.
Mr. Chairman, a motion to adjourn.
Your second?
Second.
All right. Select Board Member Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye.
Good night, everyone.